All right, we're live.
Okay, the meeting of the Everett School Committee for Monday, March 3rd will come to order. Roll call, vote please, Mr. Leston.
Mr. Abaze?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardelo? You're muted. May?
Here.
Present? Here.
Addie's muted.
Mr. La Monica? Ms. Murray? Here. Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here. We have nine members present, we have a quorum, can you please all rise and salute the flag?
A allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. Republic, which is stands, one nation, on God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the hybrid meeting of the school committee. We have people that are participating here at live at Everett High School and those are joining us remotely. So with that, if the superintendent could please read Roman number three.
Thank you Chairman Parker and good evening to everyone here and everyone watching at home. Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from February 16th, 2021.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Let's second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to waive the reading and placed on file. If Ms. Leston can provide us with a roll call vote.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo? Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica? Ms. Murray? Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Ain't any affirmative, you have moved for favorable action, Madam Superintendent.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to open public comment. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo? Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ain't any affirmative, we have opened public comment. Do we have anybody on the line?
Give me one second.
And just a reminder for those that are calling in, the expectation is you'll say your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
I have a question, I want to know how the steps of the season is going to go when they go back to I said, I wanted to know how everything's going to go with as far as the hand sanitizing, keeping the the school clean and that type of ornament.
Okay, thank you for your time, this is just the opportunity for the public to ask not question and answers, but I believe if you hang on, Superintendent will answer those questions in our update to follow, thank you. Okay, next speaker please. Hello? I'm Mr. Soli, you have three minutes please.
Doug Soli. Madam主任.
Hello? Mr. Soli, you're live on the air.
Doug Soli.
I'm Mr. Soli, you have three minutes please. Mr. Soli, you're live on the air.
Alexander Rivas, 84, Central Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas.
Thank you.
You have three minutes please.
Yeah, I would like to know about what is the meeting? Oh, okay.
I am a family liaison here to support translation.
Oh, I'm also a family liaison here to help with Haitian Creole.
Tatiana Cunningham, 11 Duncan Road in Everett. So my main question is, with you guys trying to open back up in two weeks, what is going to be the situation with after school for the kids who need it?
Okay, again, if I came from the chair.
Oh, okay. Then I, yes, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that it for callers, Mr. Moran? Okay, are there any further callers?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, I'll say it for the third time anyway, are there any callers? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public.
Make a motion to close public participation.
Second, I'll second.
Okay, motion made, seconded to close up a point. Roll call vote please, Mr. Leston.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo? Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, ain't any affirmative, we've closed public comment. Madam Superintendent?
So Roman numeral five is reported as superintendent and is always, we are going to be starting with this evening's update. Alright, so, you know, it is fitting that we're gathered here inside the Everett High School library as we are implementing our plans to bring back students for full-time in-person teaching and learning. Early last week, as many already know, Governor Charlie Baker and Education Commissioner Jeff Riley did call on districts to to open schools for elementary students by the first week of April with a phased reopening for middle schoolers to follow. The mandate was, you know, surprising but not shocking, given the significantly improved COVID-19 metrics, evidence showing minimal spread in schools and concern about the social and emotional fallout from prolonged isolation of our students. So these factors are joining to form a consensus that this is an opportune time to move from remote to in-person teaching and learning for those families who do want it. So tonight, we will detail the factors that have led us to pivot from our hybrid plan to meeting the state's directives in the coming weeks. I do think it is very important to remember that the coming back to school on a full-time, full-day basis has always been one of our chief objectives for the 2020-2021 school year. You know, before the school year started, D E C did require that districts devise remote, hybrid and in-person reopening plan, so we had to create all three, which were unanimously approved in August, not only by D E C but also by our stakeholders. So the plans were formulated with input from our return to school steering committee and all of the subcommittees with considerable input from educators, community members, elected officials and parents. Unfortunately, the pandemic did not allow us to proceed with our original timeframes, which called for us to be in a hybrid. The original plan was for us to be in a hybrid model by quarter two and fully back in person by start of quarter three for all grades. But unfortunately, again, we all know that unfortunately, those plans were delayed. I understand that, you know, apprehension does persist and we are not going to emerge from COVID-19 in a moment or on the back of any single decision. But the mandate from the state, in concert with some of the most up-to-date and relevant information, does require us to act. So I know that there is some stress in this, but also I do hope that there is a lot of anticipation and also excitement. So before I get to the reopening plan, as usual this evening, I would like to start with a few highlights. I will move on to the COVID-19 metrics and then we'll proceed with the updates on our reopening. So our first highlight for this evening shows the breadth and depth of the Black History Month events and activities that were held throughout the month of February. So under the leadership of the Vice Principal at the Everett High School, Corey McCarthy, and the student-based organization Empowering Young Black Excellence, or E Y B E, the events were informational, aspirational, entertaining, incredibly well organized, and very inspiring, and I think they were a credit to our district in general and our high school in particular. I think they are just another demonstration of our focus on equity work this year. I also do want to give a shout out to Advisor Sacha Walls and the E Y B E. So the E Y B E does provide academic support and community service opportunities to our Everett High School students with the aim of building their leadership skills while promoting self-esteem, confidence, teamwork and respect. So the club was also instrumental in helping organize the virtual events that were held throughout this past month. Fortunately for everyone watching tonight, Mr. McCarthy will be with us later tonight along with some of his colleagues and the E Y B E, and he will talk in further detail about some of the amazing events they held. I also wanted to take the chance to congratulate Mr. McCarthy for being nominated to receive a 2020-2021 Black Excellence on the Hill Award by the Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus. We are also very pleased to announce that we've received a grant from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which you will be, there will be a motion to accept this night, tonight, or a request to accept tonight under a program called GLEAM, that stands for Growing Literacy Equity across Massachusetts. So the overarching aim of the GLEAM initiative is to help districts develop a multi-tiered, evidence-based and culturally responsive approach to boost academic achievement for all of our students. The EPS was easily eligible for this grant, which was based on the percentage of our students who are identified as economically disadvantaged. And our participation in this program is completely aligned with our overall core values of equity and access. Because again, it is aimed at ensuring that all our Everett students have equitable access to high-quality programs. So to meet GLEAM's objectives, we are currently accepting applications from current EPS educators to join our literacy grant team, which is being led by English Learners Coordinator Anne Auger, E H S English Department Chair Ryan McGowan, Kavarian School Assistant Principal Janet Taylor, and Special Education Leader Shereen Mustafa. So the team is creating a comprehensive and official three-year literacy plan for grades K through 12. And we will also be working with consultants from Keys to Literacy, that is a leader that helps educators improve student literacy skills through research-based professional development that they offer. So I'm really excited about what our experienced and dedicated educators and the team from Keys to Literacy will develop. And I do look forward to providing updates about their progress, starting with letting you know who ends up joining the GLEAM team when they are selected later this month. We also have some exciting announcements regarding academic support for our students. So I think that, you know, we educators everywhere acknowledge that some of our students have fallen behind during remote learning. Our high-risk students are facing a wide range of deficits and our approach to helping them needs to be proactive, creative and multi-tiered. So as we develop this layered and comprehensive plan for what we hope and expect will be a traditional 2021-2022 school year, there are some things that we want to do in the immediate term to offer more learning time and more enrichment opportunities. So up first is what we are calling our April Acceleration Academies, which we will hold from Tuesday through Friday of our spring vacation in April. So the intense instruction and enrichment programs will be offered to high-need students at all of our K through eight schools and at Everett High. We're considering anywhere from 40 to 80 students at each site. Teachers who serve as academic leaders of the Acceleration Academies will receive a stipend. We hope to be serving a wide cross-section of students, including our English learners, students with disabilities, low-income students, but also our general education students. And we really want to attempt to connect with the students who have missed a large number of school days or who have been identified by their teachers as needing additional support. Our Acceleration Academies actually spring from an idea that was formulated by the state's current Commissioner of Education, Jeffrey Riley, when he was principal at a middle school in Boston. In fact, even though I was a high school teacher at the time, I actually worked many of his intensive academies at the Edwards Middle School until they became widely adopted throughout the Boston Public Schools. I have very fond memories of these opportunities to support students in these small groups on a set of, you know, targeted and very individualized skills that will help support them in their future academic growth. So I think this is a perfectly situated opportunity for us right now to be able to support our students, given everything that has occurred this year. At Everett High School, we are also looking to offer what is called an Academic Recovery Academy, or A R A, which will include an additional five days of instruction after the school year ends in June. So through the A R A, students will have the chance to raise their grade, if they have a lower grade to a C. And in addition to being fair and equitable, we believe the A R A is a great way of directly helping those students who suffered COVID-19 either personally or in their household and/or needed to maybe find a job to help their family during the pandemic, so they are going to, they need extra academic support at the end of the school year, we want to provide them another opportunity to succeed this year. Today was also a very exciting day for our district because we welcomed back more than 50 of our English learners. So this was the culmination of an effort that we began earlier this winter, that I believe I mentioned at a previous meeting, where we surveyed ESL teachers in grades one through three to see if they would be interested in returning to class today, March 1st, for in-person instruction for four days a week. So two Whittier teachers and one each at the Parlin and the Lafayette started today and allowed us to help these students who we know would benefit from that in-person support. So we prioritized English learners who have been in the United States for one or two years and who were struggling with absences and/or remote education. So our family liaisons, they actually directly reached out to 61 families and 51 accepted the opportunity. Those who said yes were very excited and appreciative of the offer. We did unfortunately fail to connect with only one family after several attempts, but nine other families did decline the offer, saying that they either preferred to wait when we come back to full in-person or because they were actually planning on moving and didn't want to take a spot in the program. So another interesting note on the in-person services, last week, we actually saw an increase in attendance at our e-learning centers of almost 10%. You know, we were wondering, can we cite this as evidence that maybe families are growing more interested in sending their students back to school? You know, I can't say that I would state that based on just one week worth of data. But I will say that the attendance at our e-learning centers has been extremely consistent over the past few months. So last week's spike was definitely something that was noteworthy and that I wanted to mention. So moving on to our attendance update, we do have, again, encouraging news overall. Most notably, the last six weeks have resulted in our best period of district-wide attendance, so 95% of our students are attending. The chart on the right shows a recent decrease in daily absences that we do hope is going to continue through the remainder of the year. As of the 99th day of school, more than 5,500 of our students have attendance rates of 90% or greater, which has been a very steady number in the last few months. Also, just as impressive, I think, is a total of 1,705 students have not missed a single day of e-education. And again, you know, I've been, I mentioned this pretty much at every meeting, but we do hope that returning for more in-person instruction will reengage the students who we have not been able to reach, even despite our persistent outreach efforts and who have fallen into the at-risk categories, as you can see in the last three columns on the chart on the left. So those are the students we are really hoping that we'll be able to to reach when we return to school. Switching to the COVID data, we always show this chart, we always provide a snapshot of Everett's cumulative data. So as of today, there have been more than 7,500 total positive cases in Everett. Obviously, the total case count is always going to rise because it's a cumulative count. It is by how much it rises that is our real concern. We have started to see a flattening of the curve and we do hope that we have seen the end of the sharp upward surge that we experienced over the final three months of the year 2020. Since February, I will say that Everett's daily cases have been trending downwards towards the single digits. And actually, I'll show those more details on that in the next slide. So this chart shows that our daily confirmed cases continued to decrease during the last two-week reporting period. So this yellow line definitely shows an unmistakable downward movement. The green line shows that the case count does fluctuate quite a bit day to day. But again, the ceiling and the floor are both dropping, which is great news. Looking at just the last four days illustrates this, so from February 26th through just this morning, Everett reported seven cases, 24 cases, 12 cases, and then 13 cases. So again, while we should all be encouraged by a number like seven, you know, we still need to make sure that we are remaining vigilant. You know, the number 24 should certainly remind us that it's not the time to relax any of the personal safety protocols, but that the ones that we have been putting in place are certainly working. For our third consecutive meeting, this chart shows the most dramatic overall view of how things are changing for the better. So daily incidence rate and percent positivity have both steadily dropped since a peak in early January. So this means that Everett is no longer in the red category the state uses to identify the communities at the highest risk of coronavirus transmission. So using both the state guidance and the ratings from the Centers for Disease Control, Everett is now in the moderate or yellow category, which is amazing news. In mid-January, 229 communities were in the red, but actually, this number is now less than 30. So this isn't just great news for Everett, we are seeing this all around Massachusetts. So I do want to thank everyone again in the Everett community for their vigilance and the continued sacrifices they've made in order to get us down to these numbers. So to switch our focus to the return of school, you know, the last few weeks have seen a flurry of announcements and developments that have provided a far greater consensus than we've seen at any other point in this school year, honestly, regarding returns to school. So improving health data as well as definitive and, you know, concise and consistent messaging from the state and our national leaders has created an environment that is suitable and encourages school reopening. So some of the pertinent recurring themes of reopening discussions include, you know, direction from our leaders, President Biden, Governor Baker, Commissioner O'Reilly, are all among the ones who are prioritizing school reopening. The affirmation by educational leaders and medical professionals that the three feet of physical distancing is an acceptable distance for Massachusetts schools. Emphasis on in-person instruction for students in elementary grades, which is where our reopening plan will begin with our K to five students. There's also been wide agreement regarding that the vaccine, while of course clearly a crucial layer of protection for school staff or honestly for everyone, in fact, is not seen as necessarily a prerequisite for reopening schools. And finally, an emphasis on the importance of comprehensive testing programs for staff and students, which we will have in place, including required testing of symptomatic individuals. So I want to circle back to what I know is the topic getting the most attention, which is the three feet of physical distancing. So our school reopening plan does call for, again, a three feet of physical distancing at all times with the aim of creating more space whenever possible. So this is a change from our previous plans, we have discussed here at school committee for the past few months, but it is consistent with our aforementioned school reopening plan that was approved and published back in August. So as things stand today, we are comfortable with the three feet minimum, so for us, it does represent, you know, a strong mix of the science, the safety, and all of the messaging that we are hearing and guidance that we are receiving. And again, while I understand and appreciate that the preference is for a six-feet minimum, it is useful to remember that the three-feet threshold was recommended by D E C as far back as June of 2020. So the significant amount of data that has been compiled since then does show that D E C's original guidance was sound where schools were concerned. It is true, you know, that the CDC does continue to recommend six feet, but last week, a group of more than 60 physicians, public health experts and infectious disease specialists actually wrote a letter calling on the Commonwealth to keep its original guidance in place and opt for the three feet over the six feet, saying that it is more suited to our state than the CDC's advice. And their quote was, "Massachusetts schools have reopened with as little as three feet of distance between students and have proven that with mitigation measures in school transmission is exceedingly rare. The closer spacing only fails when those other mitigation pieces are not in place." So this, they also said, "This mirrors data from other states and other countries." So Commissioner O'Reilly has been very firm on this point. And while we may have originally erred on the side of caution, because we didn't have the data, we now do have the data, along with the expert opinions, that reiterate that this guideline is sound. And so it is important to note that we are, again, no less committed to enforcing the three-feet minimum than we would six feet, so we will be very vigilant about three feet. This is not going to be a recommendation or, you know, just a casual rule. We will be following this guideline consistency in all spaces and all buildings, every single day that we're in school. And we will be, again, where possible, striving for even further distance. As for other important updates, there have been so many. Last week, there was an announcement, again, like I mentioned, from the state that has started a broad effort to return more students to the school buildings. Again, Commissioner O'Reilly is seeking to end the pandemic-related measures that have allowed school districts to count on remote and hybrid learning time toward our state-mandated instructional hours. So Desi is asking that all districts push for in-person instruction regardless of the prevalence of COVID nineteen. And as we discussed earlier, we are happy to report that we are actually in a position where we're launching our reopening plan in concert with improved coronavirus statistics. So it's not just that we are doing this regardless of very, you know, dire numbers. Desi is also recommending a phased-in approach to returning students to classrooms. The first goal, again, is to bring back elementary students for in-person teaching and learning five days a week by the first week of April. Parents will continue to have the option of sticking with remote education if it makes sense for their family. And obviously, at the outset of our reopening, students in grades six through twelve will continue with e-education. And we're also waiting on coming guidance from the state regarding the return of these students. So considering the new updates and announcements that we have received since our last school committee meeting, we have determined that it would be best to pivot our return-to-school strategy. And rather than transitioning to hybrid instruction on March fifteenth, only to have to switch to in-person a few weeks later, we believe that it would be most prudent to move directly into the full in-person instruction for K-5, as will be required by the state. So thus, we are launching a new plan to return to school, which is actually ironically more close to our original plan to return to school that we crafted last year. So one aspect that remains unchanged from unchanged from what I mentioned at our previous meeting, school committee meeting, is that a week from today, on Monday, March eighth, we would like to have all teachers and staff return to school to prepare for our reopening. Again, while our original plan was to begin transitioning into hybrid learning starting on Monday, March fifteenth, we think that that would result in too many transitions for students and staff. So while we have determined that we will be moving straight to in-person learning, we do still need to regroup with the Everett Teachers Association to solidify the dates for that that transition. What we do know is that when we do begin, it will be on a Monday in March in order to meet the state guideline of being in in-person by April. We will start with kindergarteners and students in all of our substantially separate special education classes on the Monday. The following day or the Tuesday of that week, we'd like to bring back first grade. On Wednesday, we'd bring back second grade, and on Thursday, we would bring back grades three to five. So in this way, we'll have a four-day-long transition period. We don't want to prolong the rollout any more than is necessary. And we also want to keep in mind that families, at the times that they are not transitioning in, will have their students at home. So we wanted to make that transition time reasonable for our families. Stipulated by Desi, not to mention our official EPS reopening plan, families, again, do have the choice to remain in remote learning if they want. But once in-person services do begin, we will have to close our e-learning centers. We will not have the personnel to staff both in-person and e-learning centers, which was also the case even when we were moving to hybrid. So the last day for e-learning centers will be the Friday before we begin transitioning in our kindergarteners and substantially separate students. So we will do it immediately the Friday before. So again, we are finalizing these dates with the ETA, but in the case for hypothetically, for example, we were beginning on March fifteenth, that would mean that the last day for e-learning centers would be on March twelfth. Again, as soon as possible, we will be solidifying these dates with the ETA and communicating them widely. And then, once that is done, we will closely examine and discuss every aspect of the reopening to make any any necessary adjustments we're going to need to make before we add six through grade six through twelve. And again, we're also waiting on coming guidance that we have been told will be coming from the state regarding the return of these students. So again, I know that we are pivoting very quickly from a hybrid plan to embracing the state's mandate that schools bring back elementary students on a full-time basis by April. You know, when Governor Baker did make the announcement on February twenty-third, I will say that I, you know, while surprised, I did, it did not take long for us as a team to realize that this was in the best interest of our students. And this slide highlights the the obvious considerations that have led us to this decision. So first, you know, we're experiencing, again, like I've mentioned, a real sustained decline in positivity rates, which we highlighted, and which are propelling our reopening plans. I also know that Desi has a waiver process that schools and districts can pursue. But I do want to be clear that not only do I not believe that we would qualify for a waiver, but I'm also not convinced that we would actually, that we need the waiver. By state and district standards, I would say that we already are able to push forward with the plan to bring elementary students back by April. Additionally, you know, we have not started, you know, I know this came on the very tail end of us releasing all of our information for our hybrid model, but at least it came when it did. And while we have a long and invaluable collection of information on remote learning, and while we were ready to launch our hybrid learning based on our research and preparation, you know, hybrid isn't something we've done yet. So in this fundamental sense, you know, it does seem logical to to embrace the chance to transition to a far more traditional approach for teaching and learning. You know, again, you know, we know that this year isn't going to be described as normal at any point, but by bypassing hybrid, particularly as we move into April, you know, we we do believe that that this could be a much smoother transition and definitely smoother than going in these next few weeks from remote to hybrid to in-person. For families, too, we do believe that this is an easier proposition. You know, under our hybrid model, parents had to choose and would have had been required to make daycare work personal arrangements three days per week. And they would have had to do this without the help of our e-learning centers, which, again, we would have had closed. And I know that this was a question that came up at many of our meetings with families. And just as significantly, our, you know, parents and guardians would have been asked to steer their students through another layer of instruction. So again, removing the hybrid hurdle from this race, so to speak, you know, we feel like is going to make sense not only from an educational and operational standpoint, but also from the perspective of our students and families. Another very important factor that we want to consider, that we did consider, is that the state is moving, again, to eliminate hybrid learning from counting towards its required amount of structured learning time. So what that means is that even if we were approved for a waiver to start with hybrid instruction, rather than going directly into full in-person, that would not exempt us from meeting the student learning time requirements and would thus need to extend our school year into the summer or explore Saturday school. So the literature thus far has stated that, again, even if we were to be approved for that waiver, it would not count towards student learning time. So that is what the they are seeking to get approval for now. And finally, as we begin discussing, you know, at our last meeting, as we began discussing at our last meeting, we are growing more concerned about the social and emotional well-being of our students and their basic academic achievement. So we're particularly worried about our most vulnerable students. You know, our English learners, our students who are on IEPs, our students who are struggling with absences. All of this to say that equity has to be viewed as a major motivator for us at this point in time. We do have students who lead us, and we do not want to ignore that fact. So all of those considerations in play, we do believe it's best to start with full in-person for K-5. So we've been asked, you know, what will a full in-person school day look like? We did have, again, our hybrid guidance ready to to put out into the world right before this announcement was made. So now we are pivoting. And one thing I will say as we as we make this new guidance is that it is very similar to a traditional school day. So, you know, the essential safety measures are in place, and so that's what looks different. The minimum of three feet, the physical distancing, mandatory face coverings, the hand sanitizer stations in every room, hand washing stations, automatic soap dispensers, all of those things that we've talked about before will all be in place. However, instead of, you know, going on and off, it will be a more traditional school day. So the remote day will also be the same for students at home once we transition to in-person learning. So once the school day begins, our educators will be free to teach our students to the greatest extent possible as if it were a normal school day. And I know that hasn't necessarily been the schedule that we've been using during remote learning. So some things, you know, to consider and some questions that we've had is like start time. And again, this will all be coming out in our guidance and documents that will be released. Teachers will continue to work their contractual scheduled day. That will not change. Students will begin entering school at the same time at seven forty-five AM, but we will be providing a rolling and extended entrance to promote more social distancing. For entrances and exits, we'll be using as many entrances and exits as possible. You know, school leaders will be communicating to their families about which entrance and exits they'll be using. We're purchasing the sensory thermometers. And and student exits may even be staggered on a school-by-school basis to ensure distancing. As far as the instructional school day, students in the classroom, this has been a question we've been getting a lot, is will students in the classroom be learning by by a computer? And that is not the case. So students in a classroom, there will be students zooming into the classroom, but students who are in the classroom will also be receiving in-person instruction and will not necessarily be learning on a computer. There will be limited movement, though, within the classroom during during class and in-between classes. Specialists will be coming to the classroom with the exception of physical education. There will be access to virtual learning platforms, just like there have been in the past. For the safety procedures, there will be, again, the social distancing, we'll have one-directional hallways and stairwells. Again, masks will be worn at all times, except for mask breaks, mask breaks, and we do have the guidance on that as well. Staff will supervise lunch on a rotating basis in the classroom. Recession will also be allowed whenever possible, and again, following the appropriate guidelines. As for after-school activities, we will provide limited after-school activities at all schools based on academic needs. It will not be the same as our typical after-school program. Again, as we transition into more full in-person school, we are looking into whether or not we could start an after-school program. But as I've mentioned before, our goal is to start with a full school day first. And our families will be using the COVID nineteen self-screener every morning. Special education meetings and all other teacher conferences will remain on Zoom for convenience. So again, a lot of this will be coming out in in our guidance over the next week. There are also five components to what we're considering considering our ramping up to reopening. So first, we're installing signage in multiple languages, much as already been installed in all of our buildings. This includes directional floor signage, signs indicating one-way stairwells, tape that maintains physical distancing, and actually, in those pictures of the classrooms with our English learners, if you had looked closely, there's there's tape on the floors. And any special signage we have will stipulate restroom maximums, room maximums. Secondly, we are printing the COVID nineteen symptom screeners in multiple languages. We'll have one for every family to post at home and so that every family will be encouraged to conduct this every day. It's an easy-to-follow checklist that was developed by our health coordinator Julian Whitson, Sabrina Farrakhan from the city of Everett, and our virtual learning leader Adrian Supino. So the checklist can also already be found on our website. Three, the guidance director Jonah Hux and family liaison David Sanchez have developed a social and emotional wellness screener. So we're publishing that on our website in multiple languages, and it will help families know what to look for as they prepare for this new phase of our reopening. Fourth, our virtual learning leaders have created asynchronous professional development for our teachers that is designed to leverage platforms we're already using with traditional in-person teaching techniques to connect to all students. So this PD will be held via Zoom, and it will feature a wide variety of helpful sessions, including diagrams on the best placement of technology in the classroom, webinars on using our platforms like Peer Deck, utilizing gamification to engage our, what we're calling our roomies and our zoomies, a webinar on setting up room speakers, document cameras, and sessions on social and emotional health. And we've actually already compiled all of these PDs on a SCAD that will be released tomorrow. And finally, number five is making sure we have the technology our teachers and students need. So we've made great progress on this front, which not only meets our immediate needs, but is also important in meeting our long-term tech needs, which is great. So the list of items we've procured and are installing at this time includes, but is not limited to, document cameras, conference microphones, enhanced Peer Deck licenses, Wi-Fi hotspots, Chromebook carts, MacBook adapters, and so on. So when our teachers do return to their classrooms, they will have this technology. And then we also will have extra tech personnel to address issues quickly quickly and effectively in those first few weeks. And I just want to, you know, this has been an incredible amount of work. And so I do want to thank everyone in the district who has worked on all of these projects and whose, you know, dedication throughout the school year has put us in the position to implement our original school reopening plan, even if it is later than we had expected. So last week, you know, we held our first round of informational sessions for families at the Caverian, Parlin, Webster, and Whittier schools, as well as one for families at the Abster, at the Adams and Webster extension. And this week, we have sessions planned at the Madeline English and Lafayette Schools and Everett High. You know, it was interesting because our first one was was planned on the day that we actually got the announcement. So we had a hybrid Q and A already set to go, and then we got this announcement from the governor, making these Q and As kind of have to pivot at the very last minute. So I do want to thank our school leaders and our family liaisons for marketing these sessions on a school-by-school basis. But we do know that we are going to have to lead now further sessions to talk more about in-person learning. But still, in total, seven-hundred-and-forty-one families attended last week's info nights. And of this number, one-hundred-and-ninety-four attended the meetings held in Portuguese, one-hundred-and-fifty-four attended Spanish sessions, and fifty-four took part in the Haitian Creole sessions. The officers of our English learner parent advisory committees also did a wonderful job of sharing information through social media. You know, our LPAK leaders who have been elected are important bridges to our Everett family community. And we are so happy to have them in place, and they will help service, help us serve as points of entry to school events and to school leadership. So as you would expect, parents and guardians did ask dozens of pertinent questions, many concerning mask protocols, contact tracing, meal distribution, how we would hold gym, our music classes. So we've recorded every question that's been asked so that we are certain that we not only have an answer, but also that we are communicating those answers to families. So once the first, these first rounds of sessions are complete, we will be using all of that feedback to create family-friendly resources like FAQs and schedule additional school-based informational events. You know, it's an interesting paradox because during these meetings, I feel that I am often giving too much information, talking for far too long about everything we're putting in place, yet at the same time, I know there is still an information gap between what we know and what others know. So additionally, you know, we have a number of resources that we've put on our website, on social media, texted links out to families. And yet sometimes, again, we recognize that these resources are very dense and they can be unwieldy. So over the next week, our goal is going to, in the next two weeks, we're going to be distributing information in sort of right-sized pieces and visuals to ensure that everyone is aware of the what, when, and how of in-person learning. That was something we tried to do before school started with the remote learning, sending out and tweeting out visuals that looked at the school day. So that's what we'll be focusing on over the next week. Because again, while a lot of this information has been said, while a lot of this information has been put out there, you know, it's still a lot to digest. And again, I do want to emphasize that, you know, our school reopening plan that was drafted last summer is still on the website. And, you know, that that is definitely a reference point for for anyone who is interested. In that vein, I actually do want to address some of the external narrative that, you know, and and some of the communications that I know a lot of us have been receiving. So, you know, this slide is blunt. And perhaps it's gonna, this next one is going to make some people uncomfortable. But as a woman of color and as a superintendent who is dedicated to representing all of our families with equal devotion, I felt compelled to share this information, especially after all of the feedback I received this weekend. So next slide, please, Addie. Thank you. So I I know I've been receiving a lot of feedback, and we did receive two-hundred-and-twenty-four emails that myself, the school committee, and other elected officials received between Thursday last week and this afternoon. And I did want to bring up the fact that we did disaggregate this data and found that less than and found that less than 1%, in fact, it was .01%, came from our teachers of color. And, you know, unfortunately, this is not reflective of either our teacher or our student population. So, overall, 12% of our staff and 82% of our student body is made up of people of color. Of the 224 emails, a mere 10% were from residents of Everett. Many, in fact, live in cities and towns where students have already had the opportunity to attend in-person classes. This is not to say that I do not value everyone's opinion, because I do. Nor does it mean, you know, that the concerns that were expressed in these emails were devoid of merit, because they are not. They had a lot of merit. But again, at this critical point, I do want us to be careful about the weight we give to the various considerations before us. You know, we do have to keep the EPS and its students at the center of our thought process. And again, we have to account for all of our more than 7,200 students. And they need to be at the center of our decision-making, and they have to be the ones that motivate us. I thought about this a lot, too, as I was watching the Black Educator Night event that Everett hosted as part of its Black History Month calendar of events. You know, a science teacher said, "If you don't have people of color in leadership, no one is looking out for those communities." It was a basic and factual point and one that districts might have a tendency to shirk rather than confront. And I definitely don't want us to be a district that runs from that responsibility. I want us to be able to acknowledge it head-on. And I feel that it is my absolute duty to bring it to the forefront. Because again, a lot of times, the voices that we are hearing are not indicative of our entire community. And it is our job here, as elected officials, and my job in my capacity, to make sure that we are representing everybody and that we are thinking about everyone. So, this brings me to my final thoughts. So, as I mentioned at the outset, DESI asked districts to develop three-tiered plans for this school year: remote, hybrid, and in-person. We've activated many aspects of those blueprints on a smaller scale in the recent months. And from marking our schools with the appropriate signage, to establishing isolation areas, to removing unnecessary furniture, the district's official plan provides a complete framework for bringing students into our buildings. And it is, at its core, a safety document, and it will serve us well as we ready for the full-time return of our elementary students. I know that, again, the state's announcement last week was, for some, very surprising. And there is no denying that it was firm. But I do want to resist the notion that it blindsided us or, given present circumstances, that it is unreasonable. You know, we've wanted to reopen school from the start, and DESI has consistently released guidance that encourages us and to return to as much in-person instruction as possible. And in our case, we've had to push back our timeline on more than one occasion. But that does not meant that we ever were going to abandon it. Looking back on the language that was contained in our reopening document, you know, it's striking how confident we were at that time that we were going to come back to school. You know, and again, it gave no indication of how arduous this first half of the school year would be. You know, our positivity rates did not decrease to the degree we hoped they would over the first few months of school. And we experienced a second wave of heavy caseload and discouraging metrics. And we maintained a cautious approach through, and through all of our energy behind remote learning and saw incredible creativity and innovation from our teachers. And in fact, many times during the course of the school year, I did choose to suggest a delay to returning to hybrid and in-person instruction based on the data. And now, it is the data that I believe is compelling us to return back to our original plan. So, while that sort of strategy did serve us well, and while I've been, again, continually impressed by the creative ways our educators have maximized the e-education, again, our ultimate goal has always been to reopen schools. We've patiently waited for circumstances to ease. And now that we have, I do believe we owe it to our students to act quickly on the state's mandate and be aggressive in reopening schools. Another key consideration that I know I've mentioned is that our back-to-school plan resulted from hours of discussion and debate among school leaders, elected officials, community stakeholders, teachers, staff, and parents. So, all relevant parties had a voice in the process. You know, it was a really uplifting process at the experience at the time that we had it and during a time when there was a lot of uncertainty. And while we knew we could not even then possibly satisfy everyone's needs, nor account for every reasonable pandemic-related scenario, which we found as the year changed that we couldn't, we were still thoroughly committed to being guided by data and safety. So, again, you know, I do believe that we need to commit to our students and families who are bearing heavy and perhaps serious burdens by being at home every day, week after week. And we are reaching the point where I believe that a lack of movement on in-person teaching and learning does a disservice to our families and to our profession. And I do not believe that we should be turning our backs on our attendance of our reopening plan and on our overall mission as a school district. Nor should we be turning our back on the informed guidance of DESI and the CDC. You know, again, I'm certain that our district has been collaborative, deliberate, deliberate, and reasonable, and our decisions have never been in conflict with the latest COVID data, nor are they now. And again, I just intensely believe that it's time for us to move forward. And I just want to end with this. When we were creating our school reopening plan, which I have some images here on this slide last summer, we explicitly did it with a lens on equity. So, every subcommittee was asked to plan with a number of key questions that are here in mind and that are also, these are all on the website, translated in all the language. And I want to pose some of these questions now because it makes it even more clear why we need to return to in-person instruction. For example, some of the questions were, "What does the quantitative and qualitative data tell us about existing racial inequities? How will this proposal impact historically marginalized populations, specifically students of color? How will the plan increase or decrease racial equity? Who would benefit or be burdened by the plan? What are the potential unintended or negative consequences of the plan?" So, I can say, you know, with utter confidence that returning to school is the way to ensure that we are not perpetuating inequity and that we are staying true to the tenets that we originally committed to when we laid out these plans as a community last summer. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions of the superintendent? Any comments? Open the floor to discussion. And I recognize Ms. Lambert.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. Can you, what is the next step as far as determining how many in-person students? We did an initial survey in January. Sorry, there's feedback. We did an initial survey in January. But now, this is far different information, and it's going to change what we know and what we plan for. So, what is the next step as far as reaching out to families and getting those numbers and that data so that we can plan accurately?
We wanted to wait until, obviously, this presentation this evening. We have a survey that is ready to go. It is a consistent survey from school to school. But each school leader will be sending it out. So, it won't be district-wide. It will be the same survey, but it will be going out from each school leader. That way, they can do the follow-up that they need to do specifically with their students, with their teachers, in order to make sure that we have heard from all of the families.
And I would just recommend, just based on feedback, that there be a little more context when that goes out, just so that families don't feel like, you know, "I'm going back tomorrow." So, maybe they answer no when it would be yes if it given a timeline or, you know, just some additional information. And then, just my final question as far as, because this is a huge pivot, how does it differ from what the external school health, the Health Advisory Reopening Committee had recommended? Because I understand one aspect, but on the other, it's a difference in far as how we stagger and how slow we go now that we kind of have those numbers that we were looking for.
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, I actually received an unsolicited email from, actually, two of the members, letting me know, just in case I didn't know that our numbers were looking really good. Because many of the members that are on that team are also on teams for other districts as well. And so, they did believe, and I sent them what our initial thoughts were on the plan, and they did believe it to be prudent. Again, you know, they were initially also the same way we were, looking at the data, wanting to be conservative. The fact is, is that we have not seen, the data does not, if we're going based on data, we are not seeing the data of spread in schools. And before, you know, I think that statement was made, but we were skeptical of the data. And now, that is what all the data shows. And in fact, you know, we've been doing a lot of research. There are schools in, you know, other states that have returned fully K to 12 at three feet distance. And again, as long as those other mitigation efforts have been taken, such as the handwashing, the face masks, the not coming to school when you're sick. You know, again, everybody's personal responsibility plays into this that we're not seeing the spread in schools. And so, again, I think, you know, originally, a lot of the medical professionals disagreed. And I feel like now we're starting to see greater consensus develop, even in the media, about the return to school and about being able to do so at different distances. So, the three-feet distance was, again, and those 60 physicians that are on that one board did sign on to it. I have double-checked that with not the full advisory board. But I will, again, just to give us that extra assurance. But again, everybody we have talked to has said that, and everybody who has already done it, has, it has been successful. And again, it has not caused any further spread.
Thank you.
I'm sorry? No, no, it didn't see any hands as far as the person's profile picture goes, but I could see them now. So, I'll just take this, because her name's on top, Ms. Sani, and then Mr. Mayor after that.
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent. Our COVID numbers just dropped recently. What happens if COVID escalates in schools and a classroom? Are we prepared for transition if something happens like that? And if a teacher gets sick, or the classroom gets, you know, affected? What do we have that in place to, are they going to be back at home, or what's going to happen?
So, absolutely, we do. And it has been several weeks, actually. Even at our last meeting, I mentioned that they've been declining. So, they've been declining for some weeks now. However, yes, we're prepared for anything because we do know that anything is possible. Even in our e-learning centers, you know, there have been times that we've had to close cohorts or close the full school. And so, we are prepared to have to do that. And then, they would just pivot right back to remote learning. Again, we do believe it's better to go back and have to potentially, you know, revert back to remote learning for two weeks rather than just remaining in remote learning indefinitely. And again, I think that the consistency that both remote learning offers and in-person instruction offers is, you know, it is more consistent than even a hybrid model, where you are in two days, out three days. It was going to be a longer schedule. So, if we are able to do this, I actually think that even if you were to have to switch back and forth between remote and in-person, the switching wouldn't be as frequent because currently, we were planning on, in a hybrid model, switching every few days. So, they'd be remote, and then they'd be in-person a few days a week. So, in this way, we're actually, I believe, creating a plan that's more consistent, even if we do need to adjust and make plans in the same way that we did last March at this time. You know, we quickly pivoted to remote learning when we needed to, when we saw the numbers required it. As quickly as we did it within a number of hours, you know, with never having done it before and no precedent being set, I feel very confident that we would be able to do it now after we have gotten used to that model and after we've made that significant shift before without any notice. To be able to do it now with notice, I think, would be much more seamless.
The other question I have is, the children that are home learning while the teachers are teaching in the classroom, are they going to get the same class time needed?
Yes, so the school schedule is going to change. And that was going to happen if we did hybrid as well. Because currently, our schedule is made for a remote learning model, knowing that, you know, our students have limited amount of time that they can spend on screens. So, we kind of adjusted the schedule. We also did it based on scheduling of specialty teachers. So, now, when going back to hybrid, we were going to be returning to a much more of a traditional schedule. So, what would be happening is those who were at home were going to be zooming in, and those who were at school were going to be in school. So, it would be a traditional day for everybody, a traditional schedule, only summer at home and summer at school. So, that will be the same here. The difference is that those who will be remote will be choosing to be remote, and they'll be remote five days a week. So, rather than those cohorts switching all of the time, the students who are remote will be the same every day, and the students who are in-person will be the same every day. The daily schedule will, again, be the exact same as it would have been had we gone to hybrid, which is a regular daily schedule. So, if they are remote, they're doing that regular daily schedule at home versus if they're at school, they're doing that regular daily schedule at school.
And the other question is, are we bringing back any patrons or custodians to come and cleaning more thoroughly, more often during?
So, we had already made our plans for our custodial staff. And we've already, again, we're meeting all of our guidelines. So, we have no other plans at this point except for to move forward with the plans we already had as far as the cleaning and making sure that we are following all of the guidelines. So, we have checklists for everybody. We have, you know, staggered schedules. So, we have everything in place that we need in order to make sure that we are fully compliant.
Now, maybe the mayor can answer this, too. Have we reached out to see about at least the first shot or any of the teachers from K5?
So, I know that we have been working, and Mr. Mayor, you can jump in as well. We have been working very closely with the city to, again, continue to advocate for the vaccines for our teachers. However, you know, there has not been as much wiggle room as we had originally hoped. So, we are still waiting for when teachers are going to be able to get their first dose. Again, Phase 2 was supposed to end by the end of March, so that Phase 3 starts April 1st. So, our thinking is that at some point, since we're already at 65 and two comorbidities and teachers are next, that hopefully sometime in the near future, we'll be starting to vaccinate our teachers.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, oh, excuse me.
Mayor had something to add.
Yeah, well, I'm going to recognize the mayor. He was next on the, step up to the podium, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To answer School Committee Woman Sani's question, so we are in constant conversations with the governor. I am in constant conversation with the governor. And as you all know, we are one of the 20th, 20 communities that has been highly impacted by the coronavirus. And we are an equity community. So, I did give him a plan that he could use to allow our community, due to the fact that we're one of the 20 hardest-hit communities, and we are equity community, gave him a plan for us to be able to establish a waiting list for our teachers to be vaccinated. So, basically, like, for instance, this weekend, we had a clinic. And we had a clinic on Saturday and Sunday, and we had enough vaccines for, let's say it was 800 vaccines, and we used 570 of them. So, that left us with, you know, 230. So, what I'm saying to the governor is that, you know, those 230, and we've been working with the superintendent on a list of, a priority list of teachers, basically those teachers that would be K25, the first group teachers going in, that we could establish this list, have this list ready, and basically on Thursday night, say to those teachers, or Friday night, Saturday and Sundays, we have these slots available, please come and get vaccinated. So, there is a lot, you know, there is a lot of movement, especially with Johnson, Johnson Vaccines. So there is a lot, we know, there is a lot of movement, especially with Johnson, Johnson vaccination that is being, as you know, shipped out right now. I do feel that right now, we're, I think the state is receiving over 100,000 vaccines, I believe. It's a month or a week. I forget the number exactly. I apologize. I do believe that we are going to be, like the superintendent says, moving faster with priority groups. And I, I had a good conversation with Lieutenant Governor Karen on Friday. And she asked me my opinion about vaccinating teachers. And I told her my opinion was that I understand the data that you're looking at and you, you believe that school's on a spreader. But, you know, to give teachers that sense of safety, which I don't blame them, give them that sense of safety, why not vaccinate them, especially in a community like the city of Everett where my kids are, you know, have been hit the hardest, their families. We're an equity community, you know, let us, let us vaccinate. So 140,000 vaccines per week, yeah, the state's getting, let us vaccinate our teachers. So there is movement. I don't, I don't want to sway anyone's vote tonight to give the, I know the superintendent is continuing to, to, to work with, with the, with the Everett Teachers Association on bargaining, go back to work. But I don't want that swaying anybody, but there is positive movement on getting teachers pushed to the front of the line to get vaccinated. So, but I wanted to talk about was the, to the superintendent, the transitioning of, of days where, where K to five would be going back to school. I think, you know, a lot of families have children in the same age group, like they'll have like a kindergarten or third grader. And so, and they may be the only parent driving their kids to school. And a third grader maybe have to be on school eight and now you're driving the kindergarten to school. So I think, I know it sounds great how that, you know, giving those, giving the school that ability to just bring in small, small group of kids at the same time. I just think that may not work. It may not be, you know, because I remember my kids, when they were, Colin and Caroline, when they were little, they were only two years apart. So that would have been hard for me right now to leave one at home and then drive the other one to school if my wife, if I was, you know, she was at work or vice versa, I was at work, you know. So just take that into consideration. And the other thing is, I'm going to continuously advocate for after-school programming. And I know we don't have a agreement with anyone. And I know we do have a provider who would love to provide, as you know, I'm advocating for FKO. If there is a way we can do, be in the short term, you know, three-month contract with them. Because as you heard, that one parent that wanted to know about after-school programming, I think it's still needed to give our parents, especially, you know, you, you know, the biggest thing for getting our schools back open is basically getting our economy back open, getting our parents back to work and, you know, and, and all that alike. So if, if we don't have after-school services, I think that's going to jeopardize a lot of our families being able to get back to work, getting, getting our economy going. Because this is a really holistic approach, right? So if, you know, we don't have schools back open, teachers going back to work, people working, you know, small businesses fail and fall apart. And then they don't pay taxes. And then we don't have the ability to, to appraise their buildings at X amount of dollars because, you know, we take that income approach when it comes to assessing buildings. And then before you know it, we're not collecting the revenue we need to collect to maintain the services like police, fire, teachers, public works and so forth. So you know my feeling about going back to school and I, and I understand everyone's, at, teachers especially, I understand your frustration, your nerves, you're scared, I get it, I understand. But, you know, I'm going on the guidance and, and the information that I'm getting, you know, from, you know, from the state, from the CDC, from what the president is saying, what the governor is saying, what the commissioner, Secretary Sudders is saying, is saying schools are, you know, they're not seeing transmission, that these, these rates of transmission coming from kids to, to, to teachers. Basically, what we're seeing is adult to adult. That's what transmission is happening, adult to adult. But that's all I have for questions. So just if you can take into that consideration that the whole K to five transitioning of days, if you can look at to an after-school program, I, I think that would be wonderful. And the only other question I have, so is, am I right in saying that Commissioner, Commissioner Riley is saying if we don't, if we don't go to a full, if we don't, if we stay fully remote, we won't, we won't get credit for learning time? Is that correct?
So yes, that is the proposal that he's putting in front of the board, is that both remote and hybrid may not necessarily cut, count for in, for school, student learning time. We were already, I mean, we did really good job in our remote learning with the student learning time. We did have to make adjustments when they did the first audit and we had to add additional minutes at some grade levels, some schools. And so this would put us in a similar situation, except for now, in both a remote and a hybrid model, there's a chance that again, even if we were to receive a waiver to stay in a hybrid model, we wouldn't receive a waiver for a remote model. But if we received a waiver for a hybrid model, that that time would not necessarily count, which means we would potentially have to either, we would have to make that up somehow. So they mentioned in their literature, extending the school year, we could also potentially look into, you know, longer school days on those days that we are in, Saturday school. Again, I feel like, you know, that would actually be more burdensome. And, and so that's why we're looking at just returning to a traditional model.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman, at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appice, and then Ms. Cardello.
Let me lay my hand here. Okay. Well, Madam Superintendent, maybe you weren't blindsided, but quite frankly, this sort of comes out of left field to me. I guess Governor Baker, President Biden, the Commissioner have decided it's safe. I'm watching Dr. Fauci today and Dr. Fauci is telling the governor to slow everything down in terms of opening everything up and in terms, all of a sudden, Governor Baker is going full speed ahead with everything from what it appears. I'm a little troubled by all of this because somehow or other, it just seems like this just goes back. The old president's gone and it's like the Who song, "We Won't Get Fooled Again." The new boss is the same as the old boss. Now we've got a president who feels, and I agreed with him back when, that kids should be back in school as soon as possible, yesterday, if necessary, but I, I guess I'm, I'm just a little confused. I'm, I'm fortunate, I've gotten both vaccines, but I'm the only person in my entire family and I know very few people who've gotten both shots so far. You know, we've got 7,200 students and let's face it, even the 7,200 students really don't have a say. It's their parents that are going to decide. The parents are the ones deciding that they want them to go to school. You know, and then we've got the teachers. And over the weekend, I had some terrific conversations with some teachers and, you know, they told me their feelings. They told me that they'd heard about this, that this should all be slowed down. And, I don't know, it just popped into my head, we provide all this lip service of all the respect we have for teachers and how we feel about teachers and how important teachers are. You know, we've got professional athletes. They choose to opt out, they opt out. They don't have to be involved with anything in terms of the COVID-19. They don't have to play, they don't have to show up. And, you know, ultimately, I guess, a lot of them don't get paid and they're in a different financial situation, but you know, it's, my question becomes, and I mean, I, I just blatantly said this to several teachers I spoke to. If you have an underlying medical condition, you know, are you going to go get a doctor's note that says you physically can't come? You know, is there going to be a rush to go to the doctor's office to get something saying they can't physically come? You know, that they're in danger. I mean, you know, and then you open up the door to, you know, I've got a problem with that stuff when we start getting into people's medical conditions because all of a sudden, you know, we've got this thing on record somewhere that someone's got a particular medical condition and you know, maybe it plays into down the road when it comes time for promotions and things like that. It's a really, really slippery slope. And it's a very, very difficult thing. It's a difficult thing, but again, I'm sure a lot of people are going to do it. I mean, I've, a teacher told me that a lot of people are going to put in for the Family Medical Leave Act or whatever that, you know, things like that. That there's going to be a lot of situations like this pop up. I guess the bottom line is we're giving supposedly the option to the students, but again, it's really to the parents whether or not to send their students, their, their children to school. Then we've got this group of adults, and this isn't just teachers, there's a lot of staff. I've got members of my family that have been in the schools since September. You know, and, you know, they haven't been vaccinated. So we've sort of got a, a situation here that is going to come to a head. I personally, back when, just thought I was full speed ahead, let's go, let's go, let's go, let's get the kids to school. But the fact is, I respect where a lot of these people are coming from. There was, in my office, there are people that have opted out. They are on sick leave. They are not coming in. They do not go into Boston. They don't go on the train. They don't go to the prisons. That's just, again, that's my personal situation. I don't know, again, it's something I never thought about, never considered, but again, this is America. To me, we have to consider everybody's feelings when it comes to these things. In terms of, I personally don't think it's a big deal. But to other people, it is a big deal. They're taking care of their parents at home, their grandparents, whatever. They don't want to forget themselves. They don't want to expose other people, their loved ones to this. So there's a lot involved here and, you know, can Governor Baker, President Biden, or Commissioner Riley guarantee that nothing, you know, hey, no one's going to die from this. You know, let's, let's put all the cards on the table, the elephant in the room here. Someone gets sick, someone passes this on and there's a tragedy like that. You know, the fact that all of a sudden, we're in, you know, we're in a big rush to do this, this sort of caught me completely off guard. I mean, Alan's talking last, two weeks ago about the fact of getting the vaccine, at least the first shot. And that was when we were talking about hybrid. Now we're talking about full-fledged back into school. I said, my, I am all for this in terms of how important I think it is for the kids, but ultimately, I think the ramifications, you know, it's something we're all going to have to deal with when we vote. And quite frankly, I really don't like the idea that I sort of got a gun to my head where they're saying to us, if we don't do this, what? The kids are going to go to school all summer? They're going to go to school on Saturdays? I mean, wow, wow. It's, it's a lot to swallow. It's a lot to swallow and I said, I don't think this is a real cut and dry situation. A personal note, just, is that, this is just K to five, pre-K, is that going to stay remote, Madam Superintendent? Is that how that's going to work?
Yes, we're starting with K to five.
Okay, all right. And I don't, I don't know how we respond to this. The mayor referred to some type of negotiations going on with the teachers, but I mean, are there really negotiations or is this just going to be, this is what it is? I mean, you either show up, you have a medical reason why you can't show up or, I mean, how does that play out if you're comfortable responding to that?
So yes, so we're negotiating tomorrow night. However, I think like with any place of employment, it is that, yes, if you are unable to come to work because you have some medical condition that precludes you from being able to do so, that you do have the option of taking FMLA or if you are qualified for some other kind of leave, either based on your contract or your own condition. Again, there are several different kinds of leaves that there are available. We, I continue to hear the same, that there are going to be many teachers who are going to have to take a leave and I, you know, obviously, we are, we have, we have known that for quite some time. We've seen that with other districts. So we've already gone ahead and hired 40 long-term substitutes. At the end of the day, we do again, believe that it's really important that we bring back our students. Because while I completely hear what you're saying about, you know, people getting a choice at the, the very end of the day, our, our students really, they've been out for a year now. You know, we're almost coming up on a full year of being remote. And I, you know, we do have e-learning centers, but they are learning remotely from the e-learning centers. And so we do, and we also do have more students opting for in-person, so we have some special education classes in. We have 50 students that started today who are, are our English learners. You know, I think we have to serve our students. And so while I completely understand and sympathize with everybody and all of the hard decisions they're having to make, we have to make those decisions. Our, our families have to be given the opportunity to make that decision. We have to be able to support our students because honestly, it's only going to put us back, not just as a school community, but as a city. The longer we wait, the harder it's going to be to recover from this, not only academically, but socially and emotionally. And, I mean, we're going to be recovering for, from this for years to come. And, you know, we're already looking at, and I'm sure you've seen all of the studies about the racial and disparities and how this is hitting some, our students of color the most, it's hitting our marginalized populations the most. And, you know, there was so much focus before all of this happened on closing the opportunity and achievement gap. That has only widened during this time. And the, the districts that are providing fully remote, again, we're going to see that the districts that, again, we had to, we were in the numbers that we were, we are an urban district. But yes, that does mean the gap or the opportunity we've, we've been able to provide and the academics that will then follow and we'll see how that all, we're already seeing it, but, but we will see how the academics are impacted after. I can promise that the, that gap has only widened between us and other districts. And so at some point, all, everything we do is a risk, right? You know, there is no, I think you said it best to me earlier when is, you know, you can't make everyone happy. This is, this is a case where you can't make anyone happy, right? There's no good decision. All of us are making a decision between one bad choice and, and another bad choice. Like these are all subpar options that we have. And what we're all doing as professionals, as parents, is we are, we are, you know, making a choice, we're taking a risk based on what we think is going to be riskier for our child. Are we sending our kid to school because we think it would be worse if we didn't? And I think that that's a choice that a lot of parents have been wanting to make for a while and haven't had the ability to. And so while I completely agree with you, I think it's time. I mean, it's been a full year. And we do, like you said, we've had a lot of people in our, in our school buildings already. We have 300 people who've been reporting to our buildings out of the 800 or 900 employees that we have. And so, you know, we do have people, we have students in buildings. And so this is creating, you know, all kinds of inequities. And at the end of the day, we have to be able to, to, to support some of our students that really need it right now. And I think that, again, we're, we're making the best decisions we can based on the data we have. And while I totally agree with you, like I said, you know, this does seem like a quick, like a sudden shift. I also think it, it maybe, to me, it's, is it sudden or is it a long time coming? And that's kind of the way I'm viewing it. Again, the some, the plan that we made this past summer had us returning to full in-person K to 12 on February 2nd. And back then, we looked at it and thought, oh my gosh, that is so far away, right? And now we're a month past that and our students haven't even returned to hybrid. And there are other communities, other cities that have. And so I'm starting And so I'm starting to really feel for our families and our students who are not being given the opportunities that others are. And now that we are below a five percent positivity, and now that we have been, to me, what, what, what more data do we need? What more, at this, you know, I, I feel like now we're, but, like, I just felt like the data before was compelling. And now I feel like this data is just as compelling, that we need to re- return our students to school. And again, if those numbers change, we pivot again. But we have to at least give our students the access and give our students the opportunity. And give our families the same thing.
Well, uh, again, Madam Superintendent, thank you. Uh, believe me, in many, many ways, you're preaching to the choir. Like I said, I wish the kids were back in school back when. I, I guess just what is troubling to me is it appears that, you know, we just go back a little ways, and hybrid was just fine. And now all of a sudden, it sounds as if the, you know, the hybrid model is sort of being looked at as if that's borderline useless. And I understand everything compared to in the classroom is not going to measure up. And believe me, I, you know, but the, the fact is, all of these were in place, and now it's, forget that, let's go right to, let's go right to that. And, uh, again, that's fine with me, uh, you know, except for the fact that we've been talking about hybrid, it seems like for, uh, you know, hoping to get to the hybrid point. And now we're just gonna, we're just sort of skipping over. And like I said, that's fine with me. I just hope that we're, uh, prepared for. And I think ultimately, and this is really what it's all about, ultimately, I think this will be best for the students. And that's really what this is supposed to be all about. But again, I'm just curious as to why this thought process, and maybe what you're telling me is, this thought process was taking place by the commissioner and by the governor back when. I guess I just never heard it from them till now. Thank you.
Um, and to respond to that, I mean, I think they have been, the whole school year, you know, encouraging districts to go back. And I think that we were not in a position to, our data did not point to us feeling comfortable uh, with doing so. Um, and, you know, we were seeing surges here. It, it just wasn't the right time for us. And I think that, to your point, it's really interesting about the hybrid. We've actually heard, when you, when you talk about like hybrid seemed just okay. I actually felt like I was hearing the opposite from families. Um, you know, I felt like, um, families were really struggling with the, even though we still saw a majority of them wanted to return for, for some kind of in-person learning. The, the inconvenience, the inconvenience of, um, of doing the three days off, two days on, was really, um, going to be hard for them. Um, same thing we heard from teachers. Like, I don't think I've ever heard, felt like I've heard that hybrid's gonna be great. In fact, if anything, like I mentioned before, you know, hybrid is something we haven't done. We've seen it done, we know we can do it, I know we can do it. And I've seen it done in other districts. If, if any district can do it, we certainly can. But what I definitely heard is that people were more tentative and more hesitant about that than even in, in person. And in fact, I even heard from people that they prefer to go, maybe they didn't mean it like this, but that they'd rather go remote to in-person because it's just, i- it's a, it's a more consistent, um, and clear model for everybody. Um, and, and so, you know, again, I, I, I do think that this was sort of, um, the discussion all year long is trying to, to have schools and districts return. Um, but again, I don't think our data pointed that we could up until a few weeks ago.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna recognize, uh, Ms. Caddello, and then on tech is Mr. Penerisi and Mrs. Murray. Ms. Caddello, you're on mute. And we are now picking up your microphone.
Mary, try to log, um, log out and log back in.
Okay, so with that, um, I recognize Mr. Penerisi.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I too agree, you know, the kids need to go back sometime. Um, but unfortunately, I'm still very cautious, and I still don't agree with the governor. I, I really think that, um, our educators deserve better than, than what they've gotten. Um, they should have gotten their, their shots first, right? What the rest of the first line is. Uh, I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that hopefully, and I, I agree with you, if there's extra, there's extra vaccines, let's give it to the teachers who are the most vulnerable. Um, you can understand why teachers are, are skeptic. Um, they, they're in front of a classroom. We're a poor community, one of twenty. And don't forget, these poor kids, some of them come with families, they, they live with multiple family members. All these people have to work to put food on their table. They have to work together to pay their rent. Think about it, they live with five or six other family members. These people are out working. How many people are they coming in contact with a day? Those five people, it's a lot. They're bringing whatever back, they're not vaccinated. They're coming back to their homes, bringing germs or whatever, the vaccine, the, I mean, the, um, sorry, the, um, the COVID with them. These kids are coming to school, and it's not so much, I don't think the teachers want to get back, but you gotta realize, they have family members at home, they have little kids at home. They have elder family members that they're taking care of. And I can see their, I can see their concern. I'm still on the fence, I'm sorry. I've been through a year of hell, I'm not gonna hide it. And it's, uh, it's not pretty. And, um, I'm still cautious. I just hope, like the mayor said, if we have extra vaccines, that would be wonderful, Mr. Mayor, too. And I don't see why they will not lie, let the teachers who are most vulnerable start giving them it. You know, a couple of doses like that, a couple of, uh, like you say, you have a couple of hundred now. Two or three shipments like that, we could have the whole staff, you know, um, vaccinated. At least with the first shot, which I still believe they should all get it. Um, just to be safe, because, you know, it's, it's a, it's a domino effect when it starts. But I do believe, I'm not against bringing kids back, trust me. I'd love to see these kids back. I'm getting crazy in the house myself. I don't leave work at all. I barely made the meeting tonight again. And, uh, we, I think we all need a break. But I just, like Mr. Abuzay said, you know, one minute they're saying, let's take it easy. And I said that two weeks ago, the flip-flop effect. I don't know who to believe anymore, because one week they're telling you, slow down, next week, full steam ahead. Um, I'm only, I'm only giving my opinion, what I've seen over the past year. I've worked from day one, from the time they came in the hospital. God forbid, from the time they hopefully came off the fence or they didn't. And like I said, it's, it's, uh, if you lived it, I think some people would see it a different way. But I'm still cautious, I'm still on the fence. I still believe that our educators deserve better than, than what they've been treated like. They, they should have got their vaccine first with everybody else, in my own opinion. And, um, that's me, I'm just, I'm just sitting on the fence still with caution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to respond, or?
Yes, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, yes, I mean, I think we all would agree, and we tried to, tried our best to, um, you know, prioritize the teachers for their vaccines. And I don't think anybody disagrees that they should have been prioritized. And we still want to make sure that they have been prioritized. I don't think that's a question at all. Um, but to your point about the, the teachers being nervous about the students who are coming in because their parents are working, or they have multiple people in their house. Um, I, I'm really concerned about the parents who've had to stop working because their children had been remote for quite some time. And, you know, we, we do have families that are in a lot of different situations right now. And I also, you know, we, we've talked about multi-generational families have been discussed here. What I can say is that at least, you know, sixty-five plus, seventy-five plus have received vaccines. You know, again, over time, more and more will receive vaccines. And while I, I completely hear you that, you know, it, it does, you know, it, it, it seems like a flip-flop. Again, I, I feel very strongly that we've been out for a full year, and our students, um, need to, to be able to be provided the access and opportunity to come back to school. Um, going for over a year without us being able to provide in-person instruction to our students, except for a handful, I, I don't think is enough of, again, when our, our school system, our mission is to support and students and families. So while I agree with you that, yes, absolutely, our educators should have been treated better, should have been put higher up on that list, I absolutely agree with you. I also believe that our students need to also be at the top of our mind, too, and that we need to be prioritizing them just as much. And that, you know, again, we're making a lot of, um, you know, trade-offs here. But at, at some point, we really do need to be thinking about, how are we supporting these students when our mission as a district is to support our students?
I have one more thing, Madam Superintendent. Do we have enough equipment for our teachers to protect themselves in the classroom?
Yes, we actually purchased enough equipment to start hybrid second quarter and in-person third quarter. So we have way more equipment than, than, um, because we did not plan to be starting full in-person, and not even full in-person. Again, we're just starting K to five, um, so far into the school year. So again, our plan was to do hybrid November second and full in-person, um, February second, and that's K to twelve. Uh, we've done neither of those things, and so we have all of that equipment.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Caddello, please.
Thank you, can you hear me now?
Loud and clear.
Oh, good. Okay, now I'm back. Okay, a couple of questions through to the superintendent, please. May I say, we have approximately three, approximately three hundred total staff members in our school now, as opposed to approximately eight hundred. How many students do we have out of our seventy-one, seventy-two hundred that we actually have enrolled?
So depending on the e-learning, e-learning center attendance, which fluctuates week to week, um, and the new students that we have in this week, we have about three hundred and fifty.
So I know our numbers have been down in the school, but we can't guarantee, there are no guarantees in life, as we all know. But we can't guarantee that once we all go back in person, that we're gonna continue this. I, I'm still very strong feeling about the one shot. I'm more disappointed now that the shots that we thought were intended for our teachers didn't get to our teachers. I'm happy they got to the seventy-five and over, but I'm more disappointed now because the governor came up with this decision, and Desi, to just call the shots and not consider. If you really wanted us to go back, why wasn't there a little bit more thought process into, what can we do to vaccinate our teachers? From people that I've talked to, and no, this time I did not. The last time all the emails were sent out, I answered all of them. This time, I really don't have any answers etched in stone. This is still a work in progress. I'm looking forward to a long and robust meeting tomorrow night in the finance negotiations meeting. I don't know that this is totally etched in stone. I'm hoping there's still something that we might be able to work with, with the teachers. Maybe we could extend this out a little bit. I know hybrid's supposed to be off the table. Remote, okay, for those that opted. But it just seems like we're, we're moving along, looking forward to the vaccine, then going in, then bringing the students, and, and everything got changed last Tuesday. So I'm just hoping, for everyone's sake, that we can possibly negotiate this a little bit more tomorrow night and make a win-win for everybody, keep everyone safe. I listen a lot to what my colleague, Mr. Penerisi, says, because as he said, he has lived it, unfortunately, for the last year. We've all had something and someone in our family, unfortunately. And the end results are not always a happy one. So we don't want to see this continue. We want to be part of the solution. We definitely don't want to be part of the problem. And I can respect everyone's feelings that we want to get our children back to school. And I know so many teachers want to get back into the classroom. They miss their kids, they miss those babies, they miss those smiling faces. But we have to do it safely. And if, to me, if it means a couple of more weeks holding off, maybe just working on PD during that time, getting everything just totally set up where everyone feels comfortable, I think that might be the way we have to go with this. Thank you for listening. If you want to respond, that's fine. If not, most of my other questions have been answered by you or Mr. Mayor in Newcastle. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, next, um, is Mrs. Murray, in his honor.
Did the superintendent want to respond? I don't want to, okay. Um, well, let me start by saying that, as an educator, I really, really want a vaccine. I'm very frustrated that I haven't gotten one yet. In fact, if there's anybody out there who doesn't want theirs, I'll take two. Um, I don't really mean that, I've seen the data, I know you don't take two. So don't send me emails telling me not to take two vaccines, I know. But in all honesty, um, at the same time, I have also seen the data around kids and families suffering during COVID, and it's been magnifying over time. And what seemed like it was gonna be a couple of months, then seemed like it might be the fall, then it seemed like it might be the winter. And now we're looking at, if we don't come back in a relatively timely manner, we've washed the year. I do feel like our teachers have done a phenomenal job with what they could with remote. But remote isn't really working for all the kids. I would encourage parents who feel that remote is working for them to absolutely keep their children remote. I would encourage families that are worried about multi-generational households, um, or COVID spread, or unsafe practices, or any of the above, to keep their children remote. Um, if your child cannot use a mask, either start practicing that now or keep your child remote. Nobody wants sick teachers. I don't want to get sick from my students. None of us want that. Given that, um, I also don't want to look at my students and tell them that the time that they're putting in remotely doesn't count. I don't want to look at these little kids' faces and say, you know, I know you did all of April and May and June online, but Commissioner Riley's saying that that time didn't count for you. So now you're gonna spend your entire summer in a classroom when you've spent your entire year on lockdown. I think we're all looking forward to a summer with some healthier statistics and some more freedom. And I would hate to see that freedom curbed by a decision that's beyond us. If Riley gets permission to do that from his board, that is literally what we're looking at. We are literally looking at setting our kids up to be told that all of the time and energy that they put into their online classes or their hybrid time doesn't count. And I'm not okay with that. And I don't know how we fight it. Um, if people have a suggestion, if that can be fought, I'd love to wait for one vaccine, too. If I'm gonna be totally transparent, even though I voted to come back without a vaccine, I did it in the hopes that negotiation would get the P, the teachers the first shot. Um, I kind of hoped that if the teachers were saying two, and we said none, it would come together and we'd end up with one. Because like Mr. Penerisi, I feel pretty confident that with one shot, people would be fairly well protected from the virus. But at the same time, I don't know how to tie reopening to vaccines that we can't get our hands on. I don't know how to tie our reopening for our families and our students to a mercurial political system that's not giving us what we need to vaccinate our teachers. It's simply not being given to us as an option. And, and, you know, now we're also gonna have to move forward with standardized testing, which is terrifying and upsetting and traumatic for a lot of kids and families right now. So I think there's a lot of stuff on the table that needs to be thought about. And in an ideal world, I would love to slow down or either slow down so that we could get a vaccine, or speed up so that, yeah, speed up the vaccination process. Either one would be great with me. But I'm not feeling a lot of faith outside of this room and outside of our city. So I still firmly believe that the mayor and the superintendent are going to do everything they can to vaccinate our teachers as absolutely quickly as possible. I believe it is their priority. And I'm going to continue to move forward believing that best intention because I don't know how not to. So given that, um, I'd like to pivot and talk about classroom consistency and clarity in terms of the roomies and the zoomies. And I'd like to know, one, what mask breaks will look like for students, if possible. And also, two, if the students that are in the classroom are going to be, um, not in front of a computer screen and they're going to have more flexibility in terms of a more traditional classroom experience, what's that going to look like? How is that going to translate for the kids at home? Um, are they going to be like broadcast in on a, on, on a whiteboard? Like, how is that working out? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Yes, so we actually, um, visited several districts that are in hybrid learning. Um, and I would say that, again, having been a teacher myself, i- it's, it, it, um, is different from classroom to classroom. I think every teacher sort of does what works, what works for them. So what we did is we provided, um, several diagrams and we did, we do have a PD that gives several suggestions. But when we went into different rooms, you could see it being done different ways. Like you said, there could be a broadcast in one classroom. Um, and, uh, in another classroom, it was just the computer and the teacher could see the students who were zooming in, but, um, the, the, the other students couldn't. So it, it really depended on what worked best for the students. And then, and what I suspect is that it also depended on the activity that we saw as well. So there may be activities that may be better when you have students who can see one another, even the ones who are at home. And then you have others where i- it, it doesn't matter. Then you had, um, again, teachers who were right in front of their computer. Um, but also you had ones that had their computer kind of like far away and were almost like casting themselves. So again, what we did is we used this information to kind of create several different options for teachers. But what we suspect is going to happen, especially in that first week, when they were coming back in and they're starting to, um, they're doing the PD that we have provided, but they also have their afternoons in order to, um, to kind of test things out. Um, that they'll, they'll see what works for them. And I think, again, knowing what I know about our teachers, they'll probably come up with more, even more innovative ways to, to make this work. Um, and so again, the idea that the students would be all on computers and learning through computers, I don't think is accurate at all. Um, but I do think that there are some, definitely some, um, there were other classes that we did see where like, for example, they were doing one of the, um, like a survey of polling, one of those like, like games, and they were doing it all on their computer. And then the, the, um, the results were being cast up on the whiteboard. So again, I think it changed teacher to teacher, but it, I suspected that based on the activities we were seeing, those teachers may have been using multiple methods during different classrooms. I, I'm sorry, I forgot what the first two, I think there were three, but.
Mask breaks. No, just one more. Mask breaks.
Oh, just one more. Okay. Um, so students will have mask breaks during breakfast, lunch, recess, if permissible by building principal, um, and during breaks from in- instruction and independent work in classrooms, again, determined by principals and teachers. So we have some examples of some mask break policies that we've gotten from, um, other districts. Uh, there's, again, uh, multiple different ways that you can do it. Um, and so we do want to talk with the teachers' union about what would be preferable to them. Again, we also don't want to take, um, while we want there to be consistency, we also don't want to, um, make it so that the teachers have to do it in one particular way, if there are multiple ways that they could choose from that are going to be effective and that may work better based on what their content is, what their teaching style is. So I suspect that we will agree to maybe several of them. And teachers will be provided with options in the same way that they're provided with options for how to manage both the students who are at home and the students who are in the classroom. But again, since the mask breaks are slightly different, um, I, I, I do want to just make sure that we've talked with the union about, about those and making sure that they feel comfortable with the different options.
Thank you. And again, I mean, I think we need to vaccinate teachers too. I just, I just don't know what else to say about that. I just wish that, that we could move forward with that.
Thank you. Um, his honor, the mayor.
I'd like to yield to, um, Mr. Barrow, since he hasn't spoken yet, and I'll speak after him. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, for being a parliamentarian and a gentleman. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well. I just want to, uh, uh, we, we hear a lot about the vaccines and that our main concern is actually, uh, the vaccines for our teachers. First, I want to thank our teachers who have reached out to us this weekend, all those hundreds of, uh, emails and, and phone calls and conversations that I had and I've been having with teachers, professionals, uh, some family liaisons, uh, custodians, and especially, uh, uh, those who have, you know, contacted by phone as well and have, um, even come to my house. Uh, so thank you so much and thank you to the families as well that I've spoken with for the past two weeks. So there are many families concerned with their kids' mental health. Some kids who are, uh, have never had mental health issues now are taking depression, uh, uh, medication. Uh, so I've, I've been hearing from them, uh, this past two weeks, especially. I feel that, uh, I know that, and the mayor has been, has been in contact with the governor, has been doing every single thing that is under his power to get these vaccines. I'm just wondering, like, what else we can do to help the mayor and to help all these other communities to convince the governor of, uh, bringing these vaccines to our teachers? Uh, perhaps, uh, uh, one of those, I mean, we are one of the 20, uh, communities that the governor prioritized, uh, in regarding to vaccines and, um, vaccine education and, and outreach. That, for me, should mean that those 20 communities, I mean, I know that all teachers deserve, but those 20 communities should receive the vaccines for, first, for, for, uh, our teachers. I'm wondering what this body, what else this body can do. Collectively, us and those other 19 other communities can request a meeting with the governor, send a letter to the governor, calls. Um, uh, I feel that it's, that is always, as someone who has done community organizing for a long time, I feel that there is always, uh, something else that we can do in order to put pressure. Uh, because that has to be a way, and I know that the unions are involved and urging the governor and the, and Desi, um, for these vaccines. Um, but I'm just wondering what else we can do as a body, as a community, but also these, uh, other 19 communities that are, uh, hard-hit communities to convince the governor to allow. I mean, the mayor mentioned he had the vaccines, but, and he wants to do it. But it's like we're waiting for a green light for Governor Baker to tell him, yeah, go ahead and do it. I mean, it's just not right. Um, so I don't know, that, there is, there is, there's no motion on the table, but I'm just expressing my frustration that perhaps a letter, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to lead, uh, uh, and contact all those, all the 19, uh, commu- uh, communities, uh, school committees and see if we can do a joint, sign a letter, request a meeting with the governor, go to the media. That is always more that we can do. And, and I'm just putting that on the table that we should find ways and discuss ways, um, to help the mayor, because he's doing everything that he can. Uh, had the vaccines and the governor still hasn't agreed to give the vaccines, uh, for our teachers, which would alleviate, uh, you know, a lot, uh, this concern of, of returning to, uh, in person. So anyway, there is no, uh, um, motion on the table, uh, Mr. Chairman, but I, I will reach out to those other 19 communities and perhaps by our next meeting or before that, uh, we can, uh, find other ways to, uh, finally convince the government to allow Mayor Di Maria to give these vaccines to our teachers. So thank you.
Mayor Di Maria.
Well, I mean, I just want to let you know that there are, about, there are several hundred thousand people uh, that are still, uh, in the current priority list that have not gotten vaccinated. So, um, saying that, um, as you all know, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine has been distributed and is coming to our state. Um, I think the supply of vaccine is ramping up. Getting it in the arms of people is happening, right? It, it's happening at, at, uh, a greater amount. You know, it seems to me that many of the colleagues that I share with tonight have some hesitation about, um, you know, getting back in, in, in-person learning. And, and I also want to just also recognize that I do have a sixth grader, Lafayette, and I want to say that her teachers are absolutely amazing. And what they're doing online on Zoom is much more difficult than being in a classroom. So I, I want to applaud, you know, those teachers that are, uh, that have been working since, you know, since they've been working, uh, teaching, um, and doing this via Zoom. Because I, I think as we all can attest, um, doing these meetings, some, doing the meetings that way we're doing them, or having a meet, it's starting to get really, it's starting to get tiresome. Zoom is starting to get really tiresome, and I'm sure that's, that's, sure that's happened for the teachers and being able to keep all the kids' attention is, is really daunting. And I applaud them for their work. And, and I do understand their, their, their worry and, um, and their concerns. Um, so this is a very, it's, it's a very difficult thing, right? Yeah, um, uh, I mean, we have some great news in Everett, right? The last few weeks, our numbers are down. Well, um, you know, we're in the yellow, um, you know, people are getting vaccinated, um, uh, things are better. But, you know, we are a couple of months, I mean, the weather is getting better, right? Um, you, every day, things change. Things change daily when it comes to, uh, the administration and Secretary Sudders and DPH regarding vaccinations. You know, we're one of the only communities that are getting 400 vaccines a week to vaccinate our residents. We're one of the only communities that have a, a, a city border health-run vaccination clinic. And the governor has, you know, I'm, I think I'm one of the only, definitely one of the, uh, so no non-equity community has vaccines coming in. They have to go to the, uh, state, state vaccination sites. And, and I think we're one of the only few out of the 20 equity communities that have the vaccines coming in. And I believe they like my plan when it comes to trying to vaccinate teachers if there are spots available, even though we have, you know, but, um, so what I'm saying is tomorrow night, we have the, Madam Superintendent, you have a meeting with the union. And I see that the union representation is here tonight. And I don't know if we want to invite her or if that's even protocol, or do we wait for tomorrow night? Is that the best place to do that? In tomorrow night's meeting, can I ask a question? Am, am I invited to that meeting also? Are we all invited to that meeting? Or is it just the people that serve on the negotiations committee? If someone can answer that question.
I'll answer that. So, um, so this, just to remind everybody that, uh, what we're discussing right now is the superintendent's update. Uh, the matter as far as reopening schools is in committee. It's with the finance and the negotiations committee.
Oh, it's in committee? So we're not even voting on that tonight?
Nope.
There's no vote tonight?
Nope, there's no vote. This is just strictly an update, um, from, from, you know, the, what's happened over the last two weeks. Uh, the matter is in committee. Um, you are welcome to attend that meeting, um, but, um, only up to.
That meeting is tomorrow, and tomorrow they will discuss. Uh, i- is it, like, can I ask you a question? Is, is it up to the superintendent to, able to mandate a return back to school? Or does that have to be negotiated with the union? Would you rather answer that tomorrow? I mean, it's okay. I just, I'm just trying to.
I, I, I think the mandate is, 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 is being driven to the Department of Education and Secretary.
Right.
The Education, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
True. Okay, I get that.
Um, and, and you are more than welcome, uh, to attend that meeting tomorrow night.
Okay. I, I, all right. And, and I, and I just, my other thing is, I, I know, uh, the commissioner made comments regarding, uh, schools that stay remote, that they wouldn't, they wouldn't, uh, uh, count that time. I would have a hard time, uh, believing that when, if it came down to it. Not, uh, not saying this is, uh, you know, um, you know, I, I, I feel that, 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 that they can't oppose that. If a community were to want to stay remote for a little longer than they would want us to, uh, I can't see them saying to us that that time didn't count and that you're going to school till August. Because unless they're going to give us the money to pay those teachers or, or, you know, or, or even, you know, now we have to, you know, keep teachers working longer. I just, whatever, that's just another topic for discussion for another day. Um, you know, I did get lots of emails from teachers. I do appreciate those emails. Um, I, I, I think with the superintendent's plan tonight, I, I gotta say, it was, it was great as usual. It was a nice plan, put together nicely. Uh, I do hear, uh, you know, uh, there are, you know, there's a lot of things, right? I mean, I, I hope to get a few, uh, calls tomorrow. I hope that vaccines have become more readily available. The weather is getting better. There are some communities that are doing outside learning, you know, um, come April, where, you know, maybe classrooms outside, now I know, and tents and so forth. And that's logistically could be a nightmare, but could, could be an option, right? So, um, I'm looking forward to tomorrow's meeting. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your presentation. Thank you to my colleagues for your questions and concerns. Um, and I look forward to hearing, you know, talking more tomorrow about it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Oh, I believe everybody has spoken that has requested to speak on this particular matter. Again, this is an update. Uh, there's nothing for us to vote on. Uh, the matter is in committee in the meeting tomorrow night. And if I could just, uh, add to this, uh, from the chair. So, um, the intent to go back from K to five, five days a week in April, came about, um, last Tuesday. So now, the next step for Commissioner O'Reilly is to go before the Board of Education with his plan to present it and see how they vote, you know, to approve or amend. And once that, that vote is taken by the Board of Education, further guidance will be provided to the districts, uh, in mid-March. So there's still some stuff that, that's going on. So with that, um, I'll ask, um, the, the superintendent to move on to item, item number two on the report of the superintendent, please.
Yes, thank you. Um, and if I may, I just want to make one more comment to, uh, uh, what you said, Mr. Mayor, um, which is perhaps not seeing Desi doing that, and I definitely hope you're right. One thing I will say, and perhaps this is totally out of turn, but I do want to go on the record as saying this, is that, you know, there, there are only some things, certain things that we can push back on. One thing that I would like to push back on, um, from the state is the standardized testing. And I want to go on record as saying that right now. So sometimes we have to pick our battles. So I don't know that we can pick every one of them. And I definitely believe that returning to in-person learning is, is the right thing to do. I'd prefer not to fight that fight of whether our student learning term is, time is going to count or not. But what I do hope, and I know that everybody on this group will join me in, in stating, because everybody signed a resolution to this effect, is that if we are coming back for in-person, that that time should be used for instruction and support of our students and not for testing. And in the same way that I'm willing to put a stake in the ground and say what I think is right for students and for return, I'm willing to say the same for that. And so I do hope that if we're willing to kind of go out to bat for something, that we will all join to do that together. And that in your conversations about vaccines, we would like to accept their vaccines and, um, reject their MCAS and access testing, please, if possible. So, item number two, uh, is to request approval for the use of the Everett High School auditorium on Wednesday, March 31st. Um, Captain Landry of the Everett Police Department would like to hold an open house in advance of the upcoming civil service police exam from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, with building access starting at 5:00 PM. And of course, all COVID protocols will be, um, will be adhered to.
I think favorable action.
Second.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Also, along with the uh favorable action, I would uh make a motion to waive the usual fees that go with the use of the auditor auditor. Uh, yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, so um most of them made in second for favorable action to allow Captain Landry to use the Everett High School on Wednesday, thirty first and waiving the the fees. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in the affirmative. I'm number three, please.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, item
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, on that motion, get the civil service exam. Is there a way our school system can let our kids know, past graduates, kids that are eighteen years old, um, especially where eighty percent of our kids are kids of color, I I would love to see them take into civil service exams. Uh, can we get that out to them uh to do their different networks to make sure that they see that, sign up for it and take that exam? That'd be that'd be wonderful.
Um, I can say that I've seen it on social media um as far as how far of a reach that is. Um, in fact, um, I'll make sure that the superintendent's office gets in touch with yours because your city Facebook page and your own personal page um has twice the number of people than we do. So if we can ask you to help us by sharing that, but uh it's a great point. Um, because we really, really need to find a way to um, you know, uh, rein in the alumni and um let them know what's going on and how with help, so. It's then superintendent, you can contact his office tomorrow. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, item number, oh, sorry.
As I was gonna say, and of course, all school committee members could also share that also too on their respective platforms to get it out there.
Item number three on the agenda is to request approval for the use of Everett High School Auditorium on Saturday, May first. Uh, Captain Landry of the Everett Police Department would also like to reserve the space for another civil civil service police exam preparation course for Everett residents from nine A M. to twelve P M. And again, the um all um COVID uh policies will be adhered to and protocols.
Make a favorable action on the motion.
Good.
Um, Mr. Chairman, same 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 addendum to waive fees.
Second.
Okay, so um we have motion before us for favorable action, uh, which also includes waiving the uh the fees. Um, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative. You have moved for favorable action. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. And lastly, item number four on the agenda is to request acceptance of the growing literacy equity across Massachusetts GLEAM Collaboration Preparation Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars. So as I mentioned earlier, GLEAM uh grants will support um to implement deep and lasting improvements through a multi-tiered system of support for E L A and literacy as well as expanded access to high-quality pre-kindergarten.
Move for favorable action.
Second.
Okay, uh, the motion for favorable action has been seconded. Um, Ms. Celeste, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Abaze.
Yes.
Mr. Barrows.
Yes.
Ms. Cardello.
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Ms. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi. Ms. Sarni.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes, nine in affirmative. You accepted the grant. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. So we're on to Roman number six, which is items submitted by school committee members. We have just one item under this, which is the invitation to the Empowering Young Black Excellence Club to provide an overview of their incredible series of events for Black History Month, which was submitted by school committee member Samantha Lambert.
Hi, Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wanted to bring this on the, so as the superintendent alluded to in her presentation, there was a series of events over the course of February, which um is Black History Month, and it was celebrated with the Empowering Young Black Excellence Club at Everett High School, supported by a number of educators, including Ms. Walls, Ms. Jones, uh, Mr. Farad Douglas, Mr. McCarthy. And I have to say, it was so much more than Black History Month, which should be every day. Um, it was really a celebration. It was it was Black Futures. It was Black empowerment. It was empowering all of our youth. Um, I would, I was able to take part, well, in watch uh several of the events, and one of them in particular, I watched four times. So I highly recommend going back to watching the spoken word piece. It's all online. And so often, we talk about gateway communities with deficit language. And the our kids are amazing, and we had black trailblazers. We have black educators showing what was possible, and then we had our kids stepping up and showing us what they're already capable of. And it was the closest I felt to community in a full year. So I I really wanted to highlight it. I wanted to extend the opportunity to, I was hoping, and Larry, um, who is the founder and president of the the Empowering Young Black Excellence Club, as well as Mr. McCarthy or Ms. Walls or Ms. Jones, if they're available to present. I know this was a long meeting and it's a school night, so if they have to push it off for another meeting. Um, but I I would really like for our community to hear from them and make sure you have the information so that you can go and watch this because our kids don't need to be saved. They need to be seen and they need access. And you will be blown away, the art, the poetry, the strength, the vulnerability. Um, our kids are just amazing, and I I want everybody to see them. So with that, I know Mr. McCarthy is here. I'm not sure if I can't see everybody. But I'd make a motion to invite Mr. McCarthy and any other members of the Empowering Young Black Excellence Club.
Okay.
Okay, so motions we made in forward to invite Mr. McCarthy and any other member of the E Y B E, which I think is Ms. Pierre. Um, so if you can all just um and you know, um, all those, I'll take a voice vote on this one. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed, the guys have it. Uh, Mr. McCarthy, if you can come forward, please, and join us along with anybody else.
Hi, good night, everyone um watching. Hello. Um, uh, thank you, guys, for um
Excuse me, can I interrupt just for a moment? Mr. McCarthy, this might be your first time, I think, appearing at a school committee meeting. So can you just please introduce yourself to to the community?
Ah.
Let them know who is this guy?
Ah, yeah, um, yeah, popping in from the shadows. Um, hi, folks. My name is Corey McCarthy. I'm the vice principal at Everett High School. Um, you know, this is my seventh month here, I believe. I absolutely love the community. Um, I I I love the people. Um, and it's not really, I'm not being cliche. Anyone who knows me will tell you I'm not cliche at all. Um, I'm very straightforward. I I but the most important thing that that which everyone should be feel fortunate um about is the students that you have here. They're unlike any students I've ever been around in my entire life. And I, this is my twentieth year as an educator. Um, as far as the E Y B E initiatives, I'm gonna um, I don't want, I don't want to eat up too much of the any of the credit because with with FaceTime, there's a lot of credit. I'll jump back in, but I want to defer to um our the founder Lori Pierre first. So Lori, um, you're just really going to talk about um your experience in the past, in the past month.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anne Marie Pierre. I am a senior at Everett School. I am also I am the founder and the president of E Y B E. I'm also senior class president, and I'm really grateful to be here. Thank you for introducing our club. Um, this past month, I'm sorry, I can't show my face. I'm coming from here and I'm out and about, but this past month has been amazing. And with Mr. McCarthy's networking, we got a lot of people from uh Greek life and who are we have attorneys and lawyers who came to talk about their experience and who they are and how um it is to be black in those industries. So um, it it was a really great experience. We had the whole community come and support us, and it was good because we've never had anything like that before. And the students were coming, people from different schools were coming, and it was just a wonderful experience for me. And it was a dream that I always had, and it became a reality. And I'm just so grateful that we started this work. And we started E Y B E in two thousand nineteen, and now it's continuing to grow. Um, I I could go on about E Y B E, but I'll let Ms. Jones go on. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Nicola Jones. I am a health teacher at Everett High School, and I'm one of the advisors along with Sasha Walls. Um, what Ms. Walls and I have been with the club since Anne Marie decided to found it, and it's been such an amazing experience to be a part of. Um, it really is such an it's really an inclusive club. Um, myself, as a white woman, I always I kind of struggle trying to figure out the best way to help support and empower my students, especially those um of color in in the world that we live in right now. So um, just being able to help support and create these um safe spaces for our students to share and discuss um these topics is such a an amazing experience in Everett. Um, so it was an amazing month, and I am excited to see what else we can do in the future, not just with Black History, but with empowering all um all individuals of all race, um backgrounds, gender identity, et cetera. Um, so I do see that Ms. Walls is here. So Ms. Walls, do you want to hop on?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Um, good evening. Um, I'm Ms. Walls. Um, I'm a guidance counselor at Everett High School. Um, I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Lambert um for recognizing us um and choosing to add us into tonight's committee meeting. I'm really proud of um all of us, proud of our group, proud of Ms. Jones, um Anne Marie, all of our club leaders. Um, huge thank you to Mr. McCarthy as well. Um, it wouldn't have been possible without you. Um, but E Y B E um is a great group. Um, it was created last year by Anne Marie. Um, I'm so thankful to be a part of it. I'm thankful for having been chosen as a leader of the group as well. Um, but one of the biggest things for our club is being a support group for um the students in the Everett community. Um, a big thing that Anne Marie had mentioned last year was she wanted the group to not just be a group for, you know, black students. It's in the name Empowering Young Black Excellence, but also being a support group for all students, where all students have a safe space and they have an adult, a few trusted adults, actually, where they'd be able to have like these open and honest conversations. Um, and I'm really proud of us for being able to really kick off Black History Month this year. We had a ton of events. Um, if you guys missed out on any of them, um, you guys can check them out on YouTube, but it was a huge success this year, and I'm really excited for everything that's to come. Um, and I hope that all of you guys can be in attendance for our events in the future. Um, but thank you so much for recognizing us tonight. Um, a lot of hard work went into planning all the events. Um, and yeah, I'm just really excited to be here. Thank you, guys, so much for recognizing us. Um, I really appreciate it. Um, thanks again.
So um, I do also want to want to um, I really would love to thank you, guys, again, for um for for bringing us on. I think the theme that really arose from this is the representation um part mentorship through net, building a network, um identifying with success, right, and really putting energy into representation. Um, you know, given that what what our demographic looks like, I think we are, I think they are well out, well ahead of what we are trying to do. And I think this actually bridges the gap between who our student population is and who are who are the educators who are teaching them. So the educators themselves that that were showing up um every night to these events, they were willing to sit in many tough cases in their discomfort, which is truly um, it really speaks to how willing people are in Everett to have these conversations and move towards equity instead of just chasing equality. So by having all of these events, we not only will be able to help um guide folks towards um investing in the 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 macro vision and the macro impact of Black History. We were able to help kids and students see themselves in adults who did amazing things and and then pass the reins to students to say, hey, this is your show. We're learning from you. Um, the beauty of it all, for me personally, in my experience, definitely one of the top experiences I've ever had as an educator. I could teach, I could learn, I've learned more from students, these students than any book has ever taught me, any any lectures professor has given me, any advice some some um wise man has has given me as well. So I think, and most importantly, that we wanted to send a message that the energy should go into other races, ethnicities, um, subgroups and demographics. We have now, we have Women's History Month, and I feel that energy is here. And like, we could continue to build, we could, we could do it for Asian Americans, Italians, um Haitian Americans. I think everyone should should really, really tap into that energy because one, we find that when students are invested, there's literally nowhere, we nowhere we can't go and nothing we can't um can't accomplish. So I really appreciate folks for really trusting me to really support this group, and this is a wonderful group. Um, and and they they've really made me a a better educator.
Thank you so much. And anybody that knows high school students, I I have to call out that not just the E Y B E club, but students were showing up every night outside of their homework, school work responsibilities. Anne Marie was at work several times, you know, um, some of the conversations I had, some of the students reached out to me to talk about policy, to talk about the intersection of ability and gender and race and, you know, to have some really tough conversations. Um, and it's just the beginning of those conversations, but more importantly, I I highly recommend, I mean, the author night, I I was in awe. I was inspired. I was like, you know, because even I hope we invite Dr. Pierre back when she graduates from medical school in Howard. And I can't wait for you to be the next, you know, trailblazer we invite back. But even if your path changes, that's okay, too. And I I took that from a lot of the adults that met with our students. Um, so I I just really thank you again. This was incredible. It was what the community needed. We felt disconnected from each other for a long time, and I think you you brought so much of us together. So I really appreciate it, and um we'll pass it on to anybody else that has questions.
Um, Mayor Di Maria, is your hand up for question?
You know, you know, I I had it up before, but I just want to say to uh Lori Pierre, uh, her interview uh that she did that was um uh with, I believe, Channel Five was just unbelievable, spot on. Um, it was great to see a young, young person from Everett highlighted. Uh, congratulations to you and to Corey. I I'm glad to see you have the right sweatshirt on. Uh, Sasha, Sasha, we met last year um at the at the Crimson Cafe when we had the uh uh, the event, the luncheon. Um, and Nicole, thank you for everything you do, but please, please, sometimes, you know, um, you would think we know about all the events you're hosting or having. Um, we don't. Uh, for some reason, um, some of the events that I saw that you had that you put put on the on the list here, you know, I didn't even know about. So let us, let me know. I would love to come, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do what Sam said to go, Ms. Lambert said to go back and and watch all those uh uh different events that you hosted because uh, you know, I love learning from the young kids in our community, what's, you know, what's important. Uh, because they really drive, they really drive the agenda. So just thank you to you educators, you do for our children and and Laurie, I, like Sam says, I expect great things from you, and when you do great things, where, you know, if you come back as a as a doctor, please consider being a doctor in the city of Everett, you know, don't go like and leave us, you know, come back to us. Um, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy, do you
Yeah, if I may say one more thing. Yeah, if I may say one more thing, I, in my short time at Everett, I realized that, you know, folks in Everett are very prideful. And um, and and they're very, they're historians when it comes to their town. Um, and our town, um, because it also made me feel at home here. So I don't, and from a historical standpoint, I don't know if any high school has taken on this sort of uh, Black History Month schedule. You could, I've combed everywhere. I have a uh, a nonprofit that reaches national schools all over the place and no one has um, has done such a robust Black History Month schedule that it, that, you know, Malden was included, you know, other schools were included. And I I think being a part of history is 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 huge at this point, given how these students are motivating kids to escape the pandemic. And finally, you know, as a result of this, and this may come down to the pipe for the school committee, uh, we are uh, in the final stages of having ethnic studies at Everett High School. So it really speaks to the, how people are believing um, and moving towards you guys, the school committee, the, the community, the students and the staff and you know, I, my guy, Mr. Na, Mr. Norman, we're really believing um, that, that black history and ethnic studies is is uh, is a, is a serious component and learn, and a learning tool for our students. So I just want to give folks a shout out and kudos for that as I, as I end my portion of the night.
Okay, thank you so much. And so um, YouTube, what channel?
Um, I will actually, if you, I will send Mr. Okano, who's great, I'll send him all of the links and I'll title them. Um, and there's also, they're also available and many of them are also available in podcast format as well, um, on Spotify and Apple and um, and Apple Podcasts as well. Uh, but if you do go to any, if you type in Everett Public Schools and you see wanna, you type in EYBE, they'll, they'll all pop up. They're, they're under my name in my Everett account. Don't get me anybody. It's, it's all good.
Okay. And with that, um, let's have a discussion about taking some of these videos that are on Channel fifteen. Um, in in your eyes and maximize our own, uh, TV folks do a great job. So um, from the chair, I want to thank everybody that was involved. Um, I, you know, I'm not gonna say I saw all of them. I did some sun. But the one, um, the conversation with the minority teachers, very poignant, very movement, moving. And um, you know, it 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 challenges and gets you to think and uh, and that's the goal. So um, if we've got any more comments or questions of the guests, um, I just excuse them with that story. Thanks. Can I inform a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second is who's the customer. Thanks. Thank you all. Now have a great night and uh, we'll see you around.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you guys.
Okay, man, Superintendent.
Thank you. So um, that brings us to Roman numeral seven, which is the subcommittee reports. Last week, we had two subcommittee, subcommittees meet. Um, first was the Committee on Finance and Negotiations, which met February, uh, Tuesday, February twenty-third um, at six thirty P M. And Ms. Lambert is the chair of that committee.
Ms. Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so the Finance Negotiations Meeting met in open session for an informational um, piece. At that time, we had just received the information from the commissioner. And so some of the information had changed and and we did discuss moving um, negotiations to a separate day with executive session. And um, it, and that will take place tomorrow at in that agenda is posted. So that will take place tomorrow evening and be available um live until we go into executive session and we will adjourn in executive session.
All right. Is there a, is there a committee report to accept on this or is that still forthcoming?
It's still in committee.
That, that would be forthcoming post the negotiations.
Okay, thank you. All right, then uh, item number two.
The second, the Committee on Equity, Inclusion and Diversity met Thursday, February twenty-fifth at six P M and Mr. Barrows is the chair.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, uh, Superintendent. Uh, yes, we met last week. Um, and it was a terrific meeting. Uh, the goal of the meeting was to meet uh, members of um the E H S Student Advisory Board. Uh, so there were five students, which I wanna make sure they're, I wanna read their names because they join us and two of them actually uh, gave us a, a, some ideas already on how to improve uh, assistance to students uh, both on remote learning, but also uh, in person. So Andrew Paiva, Jane Ordiari, Yelly Midonza, Brooke Acevedo and Diana Lewis. They came, they joined us along with Mr. Norman and Mr. McCarthy. And um, they are elected body of uh, here uh, E H S. And they came to introduce themselves to us, but also for us to explain to them about this school committee, what's our role, uh, who we are. Because one of them will be elected among themselves um, to be seated right here and hopefully by our next meeting with us. As um, we had in the past, a student uh, member, a non-voting member, uh, that's part of the Student Advisory Board. Uh, will be uh, represented uh, again in this school committee. And uh, will be the voice of our, our students, bringing their suggestions, their concerns. In fact, as I mentioned a few seconds ago, both uh, Andrew Paiva and I believe uh, and the members of the subcommittee, correct, I believe was uh, Diana Lewis, who in our meeting, correct, uh, Mrs. Lambert uh, and Mrs. Murray, who uh, were there with us. They already brought suggestions on um, one of the things that they mentioned was, and this is for informational purposes, so there is no need for this body to uh, take a vote. But they said that sometimes when you are in the remote learning, you need assistance immediately, but you have to either send an email or uh, and wait a little longer. So there are ways that they uh, they can propose to uh, assist students immediately, especially on I T uh, needs. Uh, and I said, no, your ideas are extremely, extremely welcome. Please bring those to us. Uh, they will be, you know, so we meeting uh, items uh, to the agenda. They will be doing presentations. They are not a voting member, but they will be doing presentations. So we hopefully that they will be joining us by our next meeting. It was a terrific meeting. So I wanna thank both Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Norman uh, for uh, bringing the students and for them especially uh, for introducing themselves, talking about the ideas uh, and also learn a little bit more about this school committee. So they they uh, are able to uh, join us not only for our next meeting, but moving forward. Um, Mr. Chairman, not sure if the other two members of the subcommittee have anything to add to that.
Just briefly, um, so we did invite them to the next meeting. I believe it's March fifteenth. Uh, we did give them much information as far as um, understanding Robert's Rules of Orders parliamentary procedure so that they'll have some familiarity. Um, but I'm really excited and I'm excited about how excited they are to participate. So I I really look forward to, we'll also have our Student Advisory Board member elected by that point. And or nominated, I believe, at that point. And he'll be at the table with us going forward and it, you know, and I just it was one piece, like this month has just been incredible. Um, as far as the students reaching out and really exploring ideas and and their voice and not once have I heard a challenge that didn't have a solution with it. And it's exactly the type of mindset that I, I look forward to hearing more of and adopting myself. Um, there's always a solution. Sometimes you just need to get outside of yourself. So I look forward to meeting the, participating um in some debate with the students. Thank you.
And that was only for informational purposes, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. Um, Superintendent, next item of business.
Yes, thank you. Um, so finally, Roman numeral eight, um, we have bills and payrolls.
Mrs. Lambert, please.
I will make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve uh, bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Roll call vote, please, Miss Celestin.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
May De Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sine?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine, nine days you have uh, approved.
I will make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Okay, thank you. The motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of one million four hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Roll call vote, please, Miss Celestin.
Mr. Abuzey?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
May De Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sine?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Behind any affirmative, you have uh, voted for election to pay bills and payrolls in the amount presented. Next item of business.
There are no items under uh, the next few. They're unfinished business, new business hearings or matters for executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion made.
Mr. Chairman, before we adjourn.
Mr. Abuzey?
It's sort of like it'll recognize an important date in uh, Everett Public School history, which occurred last year about this time when we uh, voted in the new superintendent.
And I, um, actually, Mr. uh, that was that we voted her in in December.
Well, but she didn't come into position.
Office.
I mean,
March first.
Let's be honest, everything was going pretty good December. All of a sudden, the superintendent showed up in March and next thing you know, COVID and we've got uh, everything else going on. That's, so that's how I remember it.
But uh, no, I'm glad you brought that up. But uh, yeah, her contract was started on March first, two thousand and twenty. Uh, that was a Sunday, uh, but she was visible prior to that. And uh, she came on board officially live in person on uh, March second, which would be tomorrow. So now it's been one year. Um, I guess the challenge is uh, how do you top twenty twenty? But thank you.
Really, no place, no place to go but uh, that uh, I'll say no place to go but up, but I just want to recognize uh, the superintendent and look forward to uh, many more uh, great years, I think, uh, during this year. I don't, I don't know if there's been any person that's gone into a position that's um, had the uh, challenges you faced and uh, you've met them with uh, tremendous leadership and uh, grace. And I just want to let you know that uh, uh, I believe I'm speaking for the whole community, not just this committee, that uh, we really appreciate the work you do and uh, you and your staff and to uh, keep up the good work. You make uh, you've made us very proud over this past year.
Thank you for your comments and uh, very well taken. So with that, motion before us is for German. Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes, and congrats Superintendent.
Yes.
Yes, congratulations.
Yes, happy anniversary.
Yes, and happy anniversary.
I think he's frozen.
We can't hear her.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Panerisi?
Yeah, yes. And thank you, the Superintendent, for all you've done and a great job this past year.
Ms. Sine?
Yes, congratulations.
Mr. Parker?
Uh, yes. Yeah, okay, congratulations. No, all the best. Uh, thank you all. Um, we have adjourned.
Good night, everyone.